7:30, we'll call the meeting to order. First item, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of- It stands-
One nation-
Under God-
Indivisible-
Indivisible-
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is approval of minutes from the June 3, 2020 regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 3 meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Mike Pelton. Any changes, errors, or omissions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is acceptance of the agenda, and I have one item that I would like to add, and that would be after the follow-up items, number 13 would become, instead of a adjourned meeting, it would be an executive session and its negotiations is the topic.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda with the amendment that item 13 be changed to an executive session for the purpose of negotiation, and item 14 will become adjourned meeting.
Thank you, Jim. Jim Tripp made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll make it.
Second by Ralph Zampano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is communications and correspondence, and tonight we have a guest. Joe DeLong is here to address us tonight, our audience, as well as the Board of Selectmen. And I asked Joe to visit with us and to talk about the, basically, the racial equity, diversity, inclusion, which is the item on our agenda under Old Business. And what I'm asking him to let us know about is potential trainings that the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, in concert with the National League of Cities, may have available to communities. And Joe DeLong has been the Executive Director at CCM for, is it five years, Joe?
Yes, that's correct. So it was five years this past April.
And I'm just going to introduce our selectmen to you. Rick Sharr is here. Mike Pelton. If you could just raise your hand, thank you. Mike Hernandez. Jim Tripp. Lou Pear. And Ralph Zampano. And we have maybe a dozen or so people in our audience as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Susan. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight to talk about really just such an important, not just timely, but such an important topic for our communities, our state, frankly, our nation, and really, if it ever gets to that point, our entire world that we live in and how we live in it. I do want to say that, just very briefly, I want to make a comment that, you know, CCM as an organization appreciates not only Portland being a member, but we represent currently every, all 169 towns and cities in the state, which positions us very uniquely to be a major player in terms of disseminating information and being supportive to our communities all across the state. And I'd like to say that in my position, obviously, because we represent Democrats and Republicans and communities of all sizes, we don't get involved in partisan politics. We don't necessarily delve into picking favorites or things of that nature. But with all that being said, my favorite member is Susan Bransfield, so.
Of course.
She's not allowed to have a favorite. She is by far it and has been it for quite some time. So I think the town of Portland is very fortunate to have her and the great work that she does on the town's behalf. You know, what I want to do is I want to jump right in. Susan talked about how we were, I was going to talk a little bit about what we were going to do or going to offer or might be offered, but what I want to begin with real quickly, I know, you know, people have tight schedules, but I also think this is such an important conversation that we have to give it its due. I want to start off by talking about what we as an organization are not going to do when it comes to this topic. I made a quick list here, but one of the things that we're not going to do is we're not going to treat it like an HR training where you bring staff in and you sit them down annually for 90 minutes where they take a class and a box gets checked that they completed the class or completed the training, and you send them on their way with their certificate, and they realize that they won't be back again until next year. This isn't that type of a subject. It's something that needs to be a little more ongoing than that. We're not going to approach the topic from a narrow focus. And here's what I mean by that. As an organization, it would be very easy for us, and rightfully so, for us to come in and offer trainings to communities where we put together a group of attorneys who work in this space, and we appropriately trained our municipalities as to how to avoid liability or getting sued in the areas of racial inequality, and give you a whole list of things of what not to do and what not to say, and what you should do to protect yourself and your community from that liability. That is an important aspect of training that's going to be included in our programming, but it is only one aspect, and it doesn't get to the underlying root of the things that we're trying to accomplish. And then finally, the other thing that we're not going to do, and I'm certainly not going to do, is act like I or CCM are the experts in this field. Because, without, at the same time, examining where we, as an organization who's represented for you for years, have likely been at fault in certain areas and maybe even contributed to this problem in our communities and across the state, and perhaps taken positions that we could have vetted better. And so we're going to examine ourselves, not only going to offer, you know, the training and education, but we're going to look at ourselves and where we can do better. And that's something that, you know, over here in the next few minutes, I'm going to talk about in a little more detail. So where I really want to begin, I know that was part of the beginning, but again, made a few notes here. Susan's heard me talk about it before, but I am a follower or a believer, if you will, in the simplicity, but the, I marvel in how it's simplistic, but the great lessons that are taught under the old book done by Stephen Covey, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And I was thinking about that as we were approaching these challenges, and I wanted to share with you a direct quote from Stephen Covey and tie it in here a little bit. He says, "If I were to summarize in one sentence, the single most important principle I have learned in the field of interpersonal relations," now, we're talking about racial relations, but there's a huge component here, a lot of it is interpersonal relations. "It would be this: Seek first to understand, then be understood." That's Stephen Covey's actual seven habits, that's his habit number five. And it's interesting that he says, out of the seven habits, for him, the most important one is habit number five. So I want to, if you look at Covey's training course that you can take, there's a kind of somewhat of their core value thing in their training course, and it goes into this a little deeper, and it says, "If you're like most people," now, I hope you really listen to this and take it in, it says, "If you're like most people, you probably seek first to be understood. You want to get your point across." Now, I know, me, as a former elected official like all of you, I've made a living of wanting to get my point across. As a lobbyist at the State House, we make a living of wanting to get our point across. But it says that, "And in doing so, you may ignore the other person completely, pretend that you're listening, selectively hear only certain parts of the conversation, or attentively focus on only the words being said, but miss the meaning entirely." So why does this happen? Because most people listen with the intent to reply, not to understand. Think how many times you present, and people in the audience are thinking about the Q&amp;A, and what do I want to ask based off what you're saying, or what do I want to reply because my point matters? If you look at social media today, and you look at these racial relations, you see that so much. If somebody puts a point out there, the immediate response they get from people is the counterpoint, or I have a different viewpoint, without actually, you know, intuitively listening to what the person is trying to get across. It says, "You listen to yourself as you prepare in your mind what you are going to say, the questions you are going to ask, et cetera. You filter everything you hear through your life experiences, your frame of reference. You check what you hear against your autobiography and see how it measures up. And consequently, you decide prematurely what the other person means before he or she finishes communicating. And then their materials say, 'Does any of this sound familiar?'" I think if we're honest with ourselves, it all sounds familiar, and I think if we're honest with ourselves, it greatly applies to this, to this subject matter. I'm going to talk for here in just a moment about where we're going with this, but I want to kind of illustrate the difficulties of this discussion, even for me, and I'm very passionate about this. Joining me tonight on here is Phil Wave, is the Deputy Director of CCM, Ron Thomas. Ron is my partner completely at work in running CCM. He really runs the day-to-day of the office. I think he knows that I have immense respect for him, his knowledge. But when asking Ron, just, this is just for me, but picking up the phone and calling Ron and asking Ron if he would join me tonight for this discussion, I had my own concerns. I had my concerns that Ron was going to take that, you know, because I go and meet with some communities on my own and without him, that Ron would somehow take some offense that I was only asking him to be on here tonight as a black man. And there was even reservation for me, how do I approach that? How do I ask him that question? How do I make sure that I don't do this in a way that through his eyes and his experiences is somehow not perceived correctly? And the reality is, the truth of it is, is I wanted Ron on here for two reasons. Number one, as CCM tries to meander through this very difficult territory and really be impactful and make a difference to our membership, I want his expertise in leadership as a seasoned, professional, executive-level person within our organization who has a lot to offer. But also, I want Ron involved in this conversation as a black man, because he looks at things and has experienced things in his life through a different lens than what I have. And he's taught me a lot, even in the five years that we've worked together, I've said and done things that I meant a certain way, and they were perceived or taken or offensive to Ron in a different way, and we've been able to have those discussions and clear those things up and really not, not get where the other person was coming from, but I've been able to actually learn from him and open my eyes and expand my mindset. And so having him on here tonight was because I want him, he's going to be a leader in a lot of these things that we're doing, and I think that balance and that expertise across our organization will show through. So getting to the trainings a little bit. One of the, one of the initial, got to make sure that I've got my notes correct in front of me here, but one of the first things that we're going to do along those lines is we're going to partner with the National League of Cities, but we're also going to broaden it with all of the New England leagues, as well as New York, to bring in NLC's training and what they call their REAL initiative. And the REAL initiative stands for Race Equity in Leadership. And to give you an idea of the mission of NLC at a national level and that national expertise, that mission is to strengthen the knowledge and capacity to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial divisions, and build more equitable communities. So, you know, from a mission standpoint, we think that REAL really hits the mission right where we want to hit it for our membership as well. And in doing the mission, what REAL does is they provide the tools to build safe places where people from all racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds thrive socially, economically, academically, and physically. So that is one of the first initiatives that we're working on, again, is bringing in this national, nationally-recognized industry standard support from REAL, from the National League of Cities, to provide that training right down to our municipalities and provide it in a way that it's done across the entire New England region as well as New York. Then the next thing that we're going to do is, CCM has a CCMO program, which stands for the Connecticut Certified Municipal Official. Some of you may be registered in that. We have several people every year at our convention that get their certifications in completing the CCMO program. But we're going to make some changes or adjustments to that, and we're going to add some, some things in the area of racial equality and racial disparity and how to deal with that into community, into the curriculum, but it's also going to become somewhat, I hope, of a train-to-trainer type course. If you're familiar with train-to-trainer courses, a lot of times if people do a large IT expansion, they'll bring in their directors or their managers, and they'll train them first, and they'll say, "You're the trainers, and now you have to go out and train your staff how to use this new technology." But we think this is one of those areas that we need to offer things to municipal leaders that aren't just about them and how they lead, but how they can push those things down to their various constituency groups, you know, churches, clubs, different people within the community that they deal with. So we're hoping that, that ongoing training through CCMO can be ongoing training that reaches all the way down to the grassroots level in our communities to help us have conversations that are sometimes difficult, that obviously have to be had. And then the final piece of that, that I talked about at the beginning, is reexamining CCM. And we're going to have those hard conversations with our membership of what have we done or what can we do differently to help approach this challenge in a way that we haven't, as an organization, approached it before? I will tell you that historically, there have, CCM's position of protecting local control and making sure that decisions are always made at the local level, I believe is right. I believe that's the best governance that we get, we get the best governance that way. But I also believe that that effort over the years has really squashed, or at least tempered, conversations at the state level and other activists trying to create things like affordable housing in communities. Because we've come out and said, "No, that's a, that's a local issue." Well, the reality is, some of our local zoning and things like that across the state have created racial disparities, have, have stopped affordable housing, have kept people out. And I think we have to examine that. You know, I think we have to be honest about it. I think we have to ask ourselves, is that really the Connecticut that we want? Or have we done our best in terms of not just representing our membership, but being leaders in the state of driving the appropriate types of legislation that create equality and social justice in our communities? And the other thing that we're going to have to examine as an organization and have very difficult conversations at times with some of our members, including perhaps some of you, is the racial disparities and inequalities that we have and how we deliver educational services in the state. We just have far too many places where a child of color is not given the same opportunities that a white or a wealthier, middle-class white person is in our education system. We have communities that are five to 10 minutes outside of Hartford, that kids go to school and maybe see a minority student once in their class or once in their graduating class or in their whole school because of zoning and other things. So I think those are things as an organization, and as we go forward, we have to have honest and difficult conversations about, and we're going to focus on that. And it's going to be hard, and it's going to upset some people, and it's going to upset a little bit of the fabric of the state of Connecticut at times. But the reality is, if we want to do good things, if we want to be more than just window dressing or creating statements, and we really want to get to the root of this problem, then we have to have these hard, open, and honest discussions. And I just wanted to share with you, through the REAL initiative with NLC, through our CCM program and our training, and through our policy and advocacy approach and the community conversations that we have, we're going to do this aggressively, and we're going to do it differently over the next several months and year. So I'll end there. I'm happy to take any questions that anybody has, but I also want to defer over to Ron very briefly. He joined us tonight. I don't know if he has anything to add, but I want to give him an opportunity to speak and certainly you to hear him speak, because he's going to be a critical player in this organization and how we tackle these things as well.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. I'm sorry, Susan. Go ahead.
Good to see you out. Thanks for coming.
Good to see you also. I will have to challenge Joe a little bit in that he says that, that you are his favorite member, and I say that you're my favorite member also, so we've got a little duel going there, going on there. I first hello to the people of Portland. I'm, I'm very happy that you want to have this conversation, because it's a difficult one to have. This is one of the most challenging times I've ever seen in our country. It's going to require all of us to push ourselves a little bit more, to stretch, and to really be the kind of vehicle through which we can really learn and grow from something very bad happening. Joe was right that he and I are kind of partners on this program, but he's also right about the makeup of it, frankly, and that is that it's not me talking about the issue and spearheading the issue, it's a, it's a partnership, and I think that's how it has to be all over the country, where there are discussions, sometimes difficult and painful discussions, but where everybody's coming with an open mind and open heart and willing to, to learn. One of the things I'm also happy that Joe had said, and I'll be frank, that we've, he's right, we've had discussions about, about race, and sometimes I've pointed out some things to him, but we also had discussions about an initiative well before the George Floyd murder, about how to have, be a vehicle through which towns and cities in Connecticut can, can grow and can be places where everybody feels safe and, and everybody feels a real, authentic member of the community. Again, this is an initiative that's not one workshop or something like that. This is going to be embedded into our training, it's our job to make sure you have the tools with which to be more effective leaders on this issue. I know you all come with a life full of passion and even devotion to matters concerning equality, but we want to give you some, some additional tools you might be able to use to be even more effective. So I'm glad to be a part of the conversation. I believe it's an authentic conversation, and, and I believe that it's a time we have those conversations. Thank you, glad to be here.
Thank you, Ron. We'll open it up for questions from the Board of Selectmen, and if you would, just identify yourself, so both Ron and Joe will know your names. Anyone have questions?
I have a question, Susan.
Yes.
And this is probably for Joe or Ron. The training usually is in the fall, is it going to be sooner, or there'll be a different, or it'll be at the same time?
Yeah, thank you. I could probably give you a more direct answer to that this time next week. We have a planning meeting, as far as at least the REAL initiative goes with NLC. We have a planning meeting with the New England State Directors and the Director of REAL through NLC next week to try to pin that down and pin down a date. And then on Monday, internally, Ron and I have a meeting with our training staff to put together our training initiatives that we're going to try to do, and that'll be ever-evolving throughout the year, that are the CCM trainings that are attached to CCMO. But to answer your, your question most directly, I don't know how quickly we will get the REAL presentation in. It's going to be as quickly as possible. It may not be till the fall, but I can tell you, we're not going to wait until the fall to start our other training programs and laying the foundation that we need to do in our communities. We're going to have this, some things ongoing. I would hope to have at least our first sessions that we're going to do as an organization sometime in July. There's, there's no reason for us to wait.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll ask, this is Jim Tripp. Last couple, three years, I've had the opportunity to go to the CCM conference, and there's been a lot of good training sessions there. I'm assuming that some, are you still going to have that this year? Is it going to be a virtual, probably a virtual-type conference, or what's the plans, given COVID, of how that's going to be managed? And if you're going to have that, are you also going to have, I assume, some, either some workshops or some associated training regarding this topic as well, that's going to be incorporated into that?
Yeah, that's, I appreciate the question, because we're, we're asking all those same questions ourselves. I'll tell you where we stand. The convention this year was scheduled for early December. So I thought, given COVID and everything else that was happening, I felt that it was too early for us to pull the plug and make a decision to cancel the physical convention just yet, or to make a decision to go to a virtual convention just yet. So what we started doing is, our team sent out a little bit of a survey to some different members, just trying to, to create an appetite and hear back from people saying, you know, by then, if it were authorized under governor's orders, or if we were out of the state of emergency, you know, would you still attend a conference with that many people? Would you, would you be interested in attending one virtually? Should we do it a little bit of both, maybe some things live, some things virtual, some things recorded? So we're collecting that data. We're looking at what other leagues are doing across the country, although it's difficult because their conferences are at all different times. So some of them have conferences in July that they've already canceled. And the other thing that we're going to do internally, and we've been, we haven't completed it yet, is we're going to set a date, a drop-dead date of when we're going to make this decision. And I want to get input from my whole staff before I set that drop-dead date. So, so we're, we're getting input from the members right now. We're gathering input from our experts in terms of putting on the convention and their training. We're going to look at how much lead time we need, if we have to make a switch and do something different, and then we're going to work backwards and say, "We have to make a final decision of what we're doing by X date." I anticipate, although some of my staff may cringe if I say this, and it could change because we haven't finalized it yet, but I anticipate our date for making a decision will be sometime in August. I think if we get into September, we're getting a little too late. I think if we do it much before August, we may be shortchanging ourselves and really understanding the climate and the environment out there and how much people can get out and do these types of things again. But one way or another, we'll be offering the workshops, we'll be offering the trainings, we'll be doing the awards and the scholarships and that, that we always do. We will move forward one way or another, but it's yet to be determined whether that's going to be virtually, live, or some type of combination of both. And again, I believe that it'll probably sometime in August when we make that final determination. And by the way, that final determination will be a recommendation, a conversation from me that goes to our Board of Directors. Ultimately, it will be Susan and the other 25-plus members of the Board of Directors, when we lay out the options to them, that will ultimately make that determination on behalf of our municipalities.
Yeah, and I think, Joe, you bring up a good point, and that is, all of the 169 towns in Connecticut and the towns in the other New England states and New York state, we need to be inclusive, we need to look at perhaps some better ways that people address these issues, and a variety of people from cities, towns, rural areas, and have a very frank and open discussion, as well as the training, that I think- frank and open discussion as well as the training that I think can be across the board and be very helpful to people to know that it's not Portland alone, or it's not Hartford alone, but it's Hartford and Portland and New Haven and Durham that all need to work together on this. I think that sometimes we get too siloed and we're not recognizing that we need to work together, particularly with some of the laws and some of the ways that we administer. You mentioned zoning laws, you mentioned some other aspects of the state law. I know that the Police Officers Standards and Training Group did some changes this week, and I see you're nodding, Ron. I want you to comment on that in a minute because there's some changes there. And I also know that our constituents need to understand how some of these systems work and how the police, for example, in Connecticut are trained and how their continuing education occurs, and also how their dispatching is done when they're called to a situation and how their schedules are made. And there is so much to all of their aspects of the work that they do and that we and others demand of them, that I think we really need to take a good, hard look at, not to mention those in leadership positions at the state level, at the municipal level, and of course, at the federal level as well. So I look forward to seeing what the National League of Cities puts forward. We need some national, albeit international, approach to this because it's very important. And certainly, as a parent and a grandparent, I want that this generation and the next generations are secure and we all have the same ability to live free in this country, which we don't right now. Some of the other things that I wanted to point out to our audience and to the selectmen, because I had wanted to concentrate on training today on this topic, and I did contact Sustainable CT. They do have coaches in equity training, and I have an appointment tomorrow to speak with one of the trainers. And our development planner is also going to be attending one of the sessions that they have on equity training within the next few weeks. The other aspect is there's lots of other training programs out there. I'm interested in seeing what CCM has to offer because we're members, you already pay dues, and as I said, I hope that there's a broad spectrum of approach to this, which we need. So Ron, maybe you could comment a bit on the post-training?
Yeah. First, I want to say about the REAL initiative of NLC and that it's, I think we're very fortunate to be able to be in a partnership with them. And to my knowledge, it'll be the first time that a region has been involved in this. It's usually on a, frankly, on a local level. So to my knowledge, it's the first time that a league has entered a partnership and a whole region has entered into a partnership to have a regional approach to this huge national, international problem. I wanted to say too, that there's going to be a special session, that we're expecting there to be a special session of the state legislature at some point during the summer or sometime soon after. And this is expected to be one of the big issues that they take up. There's been an advisory committee, like a police reform advisory committee, that came up with some recommendations. As you all know, the governor issued an executive order prohibiting chokeholds. So there's a great deal of interest. As you may remember, yesterday, Susan, at our legislative committee meeting, Senator Murphy said that it's a priority of his, and he was about to go into a discussion with his Senate colleagues on it. So we expect there to be a lot of discussion on this. It's kind of a once in a generation, maybe even a lifetime opportunity that we hope everybody really takes advantage of.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions at this point? I do understand that Joe and Ron want to stay and listen to public comment as well as the information that we have under Old Business Letter B, which is racial equity diversion and inclusion. Hopefully you can stay with us. If not, we certainly understand. But I want to thank you both personally for coming and for all the work that you do on behalf of every city and town in Connecticut. As we know, 169 towns are all members of CCM, and I think united, we're able to get an awful lot done to make our lives better, and that needs to continue.
It's our privilege, Susan, to support the great work that all of our communities and our selectmen and boards of selectmen and mayors and councilmen do. You're on the front lines, and we're just honored to be a part of it. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe. Now we'll open it up for public comment. Kevin?
All right. We have Kitch who's in the audience, and she states, "Great first steps." Her question is, "Will town boards and commissions have opportunity to be included in the training?"
Did you hear the questions, Ron and Joe?
I think they muted themselves. Let me unmute you again. There you go.
There we go.
You were getting the hang of it. Yes. Yeah, I think the quick answer to that is yes. And I think beyond that, while it's a little tough right now, where we're doing things in Zoom and of that nature, I would really like to find a way too, that we take this even a level deeper and we get into having some community conversations as well. So definitely, those who are on the boards and commissions and our elected officials, those people, we're going to offer the training too, but we're going to try to take it a step farther because I think it's important that we take these conversations right out of town halls and right out into our communities. And we're going to, REAL may not be able to do that directly, but as we go through our train-to-trainer program and other things with NLC, we may be able to offer some of this stuff, or plan to offer some of this stuff that actually also is community conversations.
Thank you. Kevin?
She adds, "Thanks, Joe and Ron." And she also thanks Susan for moving so quickly on this.
Thank you, Kitch, for suggesting it. Kitch is a former mayor of Weathersfield, and she lives now in Portland. And she had suggested at our last meeting that we get in touch with CCM and cost to assist in training. So thank you, Kitch.
Next up, we have Mr. Elwyn Guile, and he says, "For Ron Thomas, given that cities and towns are now more than ever hard-pressed to fund their individual education systems, do you think that looking at regionalized schools should be a high priority?"
Well, as Joe said, we're kind of in a different, I believe, there's a different game now, if you will. Things have changed quite a bit tremendously in terms of perspectives over the last couple of weeks. Certainly, an issue is the fact that you're running an education system based on the property tax and that's an overburdened property tax that makes education a real challenge in the state of Connecticut. But I think we're going to be open and of course led by our board in terms of new approaches that we take, incentives that can be made for towns to look into doing things on a regional basis, having, CCM can be the entity that helps them develop opportunities to have these types of conversations about education. And not just education, but some of the challenges are just making sure that people who are different are around each other more often.
Thank you.
All right. And we also have Aaron Livensparker of 247 Middle Haddon Road. I'm going to find you in the list here and unmute you. There you are. Aaron, can we hear you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, you're all set. Go ahead.
I just wanted to formally thank the Board of Selectmen and Susan Bransfield for really taking this anti-racism work seriously, and thank Joe and Ron for coming to speak. I was really pleased to hear about thinking about some of these programs in the state more regionally and not just locally. Really thank you for raising that up. I worry that the issue, when things stay so local, that can perpetuate racism, perpetuate the disparities you were talking about. And so I just wanted to voice my pleasure in hearing you speak about those things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
That appears to be it for public comment at this time.
Okay. Then we'll move into report to the reentry committee under Old Business. And the first item is Parks and Recreation, Summer Camps and Programs. And I believe Nate Foley is on Zoom. And Nate Foley is the Director of the Portland Parks and Recreation. And the reentry committee is the Board of Selectmen. And I asked Nate to give us a synopsis of the information that he is providing. He's already sent it by email to the selectmen for their review. And I'll turn it over to you, Nate. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Nate Foley, Director of Parks and Recreation, as Susan mentioned. So I've been sitting in, meeting after meeting, with the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association, National Parks and Parks Association, and, you know, meetings with the Parks and Rec Commission, trying to figure out our best way to move forward and start resocializing, you know, the community, the kids, the adults, in a safe manner. And with a lot of our programs, some of them are definitely easier to manage than others just based on the numbers and based on the requirements that go into making these programs successful. And as some of you may have heard already, I have reached out to all of our summer staff, and through no easy decision-making process, working with the Parks and Rec Commission, we did decide to cancel our normal five-day-a-week summer camp program this year. The risks really outweighed the reward of running this program. I was trying to find every way possible to justify running it. And there was just really no safe way that sat with me in terms of the health assessments, the daily temperature taking, the monitor enforcing of social distancing, and the staff having to wear masks for seven hours a day, especially if it was a rain day and they were hooped up in the building. So with that said, we are looking now for ways to actually put a survey out to the community and hopefully find a way to develop a half-day type of program, approximately nine to 12, where we are not restricted to the Office of Early Childhood and the state guidelines that you have to follow for a full-day camp program. Just the sanitizing, the enforcing of everything is not as intense as it would be when you're inside a building. Program numbers can be larger, and just being outdoors, it's easier to maintain all those guidelines. So we will be sending something out to the community within the next few weeks to hopefully gauge some feedback on what kind of program or quality program we might be able to offer to anyone who would have participated in our normal camp program this year. I do have some staff who have already, you know, agreed to take part in that three-hour-a-day program. And we are looking forward to a way to really go ahead with it and get something going for the community later in the summer. On another note, I have been working with Jim Tripp, as he turns his hat over to the President of the Brownstone Quorum. And due to a lot of the same restrictions, the limited capacity, the safety considerations, we have made the decision to cancel the summer concerts this year. The state's changing these regulations so quickly, and the way we're going to have to monitor, enforce, and space everyone who would attend the park is not ideal, and it's not a safe solution to hold these community shows for the whole community in general, really. It's something we need. I think we all need it. But when we look at the overall safety of everybody in our community, the people from other towns that would come into these concerts, I think it's something we need to really take into consideration when we made that decision for this year. For both camps and the concerts, I have already submitted a press release to the River East. So hopefully, they will be sending that out in this Friday's newsletter, or in this Friday's River East. And we will also be posting the information on our Facebook, on our website, and hopefully, we can get it posted on the town website as well. So those are our two big unfortunate cancellations for the summer. And as things are moving ahead, you know, Chatham Health and the state are allowing playgrounds to reopen as of today. I had a meeting with Ralph Carl Johnson, Dave Opazinski, and Nate Striker yesterday morning to discuss the reopening of the playgrounds at the schools in town, based on your approval. We were discussing signage that would be placed on both sides of every playground. Signage includes COVID-19 safety warnings that this information was passed down directly from Chatham Health District as a requirement or more of a recommendation that you have on site. Playground equipment is not required to be sanitized. However, you need to note that on your signage. The health officials recommend that if you're sick, you stay at home, you practice social distancing, bring your own sanitizer, wash your hands frequently, and you're using the playground at your own risk ultimately. They want us to make things as clear as possible for anybody who would go out and use these playgrounds. We also have a sign that reiterates wearing face masks. If you see violations, call 211. Basically, anything we can do to reiterate these concerns and these safety procedures as places do start to reopen. So upon that meeting, if you guys do approve the playgrounds to reopen, these signs will be placed as soon as that decision is made, and the caution tape and locks that have been on our playgrounds and facilities can be removed. The next order of business would be youth sports and adult, or youth and adult sports. So we have been contacted by our adult baseball, our adult softball, and Portland Little League organizations. Today is actually the day that play was able to or permitted to be resumed. Portland Little League has provided me with a thorough write-up for both their play or their practice and game operations. They've provided me with a diagram of their field setup for players, parents on the sidelines, sanitation, or sanitizing stations that would be used as necessary. And they were hoping to begin practice as of tomorrow, based on your approval once again. They are doing waivers for all of their players, COVID-19 acknowledgement waivers. And I will be having them also sign off on a field usage addendum that I've put together, basically agreeing, or they are agreeing, that they will follow, adhere, and enforce all of the guidelines they have provided our department when they fill out our policy and our field usage reservation form. This goes for all of our leagues. They've all provided us with that documentation of what their overall organization has given them as guidelines. The Portland Little League is ready to go. They are going to be sanitizing their equipment as necessary throughout practices, throughout games, as many children that have their own helmets, bats, gloves, will be using them to limit any sharing of equipment. As far as the adult leagues go, all adult leagues and teams are required to have their own equipment. There is no sharing of equipment except baseballs or softballs. All the adult teams are required to bring their own sanitizers or they will not be able to play. So just as I have planned to do with Little League, if we're approved to move forward with our adult baseball and softball teams, they will also be required to sign off on the field use addendum, requesting the same thing, that they adhere to all policies, all procedures that their organizations have given them in terms of safety and guidance. And one of our last programs or groups of programs we were looking to re-implement here would be our general youth and adult fitness and athletic programs. In the past, we've offered these programs at multiple fields in town. We've offered them utilizing the gyms at school as well as the upstairs meeting room here in my building. These include general athletics, you know, we've offered Skyhawk programs, flag football, tennis. We've offered yoga, Pilates, Tai Chi, et cetera. Indoor gatherings right now are allowed to have Indoor gatherings right now are allowed to have up to 25 people. I know there hasn't been any decision on actually reopening buildings, so I'm not looking too much at the indoor possibility. However, outdoor gatherings, they are saying that you can have 100 people. I do not see any of our programs getting to that number. And I would not plan on having that many participants even if we had to sign up. I would like to start at a very small scale, no more than 15 to 20 participants. And I would like to implement some of these classes down at Riverfront Park possibly, where our instructors are able to utilize the stage. And I am able to use line paint to differentiate social distancing spacing for all of the program participants and make sure there's adequate room where each individual in the class is designated their own box of 10 feet, 10 by 10, and there will be no crossing between each other's space ultimately. Classes also include our summer running programs at to-be-determined locations. And there is no, no, or no contact between those programs. We are ultimately trying to do any program with minimal to zero contact, which is our ultimate goal. With all of this, in conversation with Susan and Ralph, I'm hoping to gain some sort of approval to really start implementing these programs again for the community. These fit a large need for both youth and adults. And especially as summer ramps up, people are going to be looking for more things to do. And if it's something we can't do in Portland, I feel that they'll just go elsewhere to do them, and we might lose more participants over the long term. Aside from that, we do offer a few other programs at Portland West, some general golf classes that we take registration through. And the golf instructors at Portland West manage the sanitizing of clubs, sanitizing of golf balls. And they practice the social distancing strategies as well. So, with all that said, you know, we are looking to push a lot back into the community, but we're looking to do it at very small scales. Start out with a handful of programs, four to five, with small numbers, so we can really moderate the social distancing and all of the policies that are necessary to guarantee safety as much as we can. If fields are able to be reopened and we're able to begin our adult and youth sports, Rose Hill has become a bit of a concern, the garden, or with the community gardens starting up in mid-May. The park has been opened by myself and Andy Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the adult and youth sports will be using the fields until early to middle evening. With us closing the field at 3:00, that would just lock them in the facility. And to avoid giving keys to multiple coaches, multiple team leaders, we were actually able to secure a volunteer from the community gardens who said they would open and close the gate daily at sunrise and sunset for us as a different community member has done in the past. He told me he could do this every day throughout the summer or until his schedule changes potentially in the fall. So, I will be working to find some additional volunteers we may be able to utilize so we can continue this trend from summer to summer. The community gardeners have been extremely grateful to Marilyn McGrath, one of our gardeners, who has been opening and closing the gates on her off-time on evenings and weekends for the gardeners to be able to get in there. So, she's gone above and beyond with this. And if we're able to utilize the assistance of our new volunteer, I think we'll be able to give her a much-needed break and the park will be open and closed on a timely basis for all of our sports leagues to actually be able to play and not worried about getting locked in the park. I believe that covers most of what we're looking to do right now. And as I said, it may require discussion towards the end of your meeting tonight with the executive session and negotiations. However, I'm hoping we can move forward with some of these programs. I'm hoping we can provide some of this field space for the leagues and organizations who have put a lot of time and effort into their plans and their strategies to provide a safe play area for, you know, the youth leagues and the adult leagues and guarantee that when they're out on the field, as they're working back into some socialization, athletics, and, you know, teamwork, that they're able to really get out there and experience the safe type of play that they've worked on so diligently.
Very thorough report, Nate. I appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put into this along with your commission and liaison, Ralph Sampaio. I do want to point out, I think I neglected to say at the beginning that the negotiations will be in regard to our contract lease agreement with Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. They have some questions in regard to their lease. So, that is something that the selectmen will negotiate. I don't anticipate any decision tonight, but they too are undergoing quite a bit of change in regard to coping with appropriate actions in light of the COVID-19. So, more to come on that, but I did want to point that out since I neglected to say that at the start. So, I'll open it up to questions from the selectmen for Nate Foley.
Susan Bransfield, Mike Hernandez. Yes, hi Nate, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
These are just the adult baseball, softball, and little league questions I have for you. Just a couple of quick questions is, who's gonna, how do we, who's policing what's happening? And if so, is it a one, one strike and you're out? Baseball term, I guess. Or is it three strikes, you're out? Or like, how many chances? I would feel bad if they shut, well, I'm on the board for Little League. I would feel bad if a parent signed their kid up and then say, into their first game, they shut the program down. I'm just curious, how is it going to be policed and how, and what kind of system we got to put in place for that?
So, one of our difficulties with the size of our department is that our field usage, any organization or league who has used the field has not been or is not able to be monitored during their field use. And that's the reason behind the addendum that I did put together, following up on any of their, any guidelines and any protocols that the organization leads have handed down to what the leagues need to follow. James has told me for Portland Little League, parents and coaches would be responsible for making sure that when they're at practices, when they're at games, they would be following through with the sanitization of any equipment that's shared. Umpires and coaches would be responsible for swapping out the balls every other inning as necessary. Anytime they get off the field, coaches would be responsible for making kids sanitize their hands and space out six feet apart from one another on the sidelines. So, the same goes for all of our adult leagues. The, whoever team captains are, are responsible for enforcing all of these policies. And by having this addendum, it does include in here that the signer of it is agreeing and is responsible for reviewing all applicable guidelines and requirements by the town of Portland. And it also, or it also mentions that failure to adhere to the policies and guidelines provided to the town and field usage can revoke any permission of the fields. So, those captains or from any of the adult teams are responsible for monitoring their teams. If somebody did make complaints, there is a chance that those teams could have their days removed. One of the benefits of the adult teams is they really only use, Nolan Field is reserved right now, I think, six nights between Monday and Sunday. And then our Bransfield Park, one of the adult teams is only scheduled to use it about five Sunday mornings into the afternoon. The only one that uses it regularly is the Twilight League, which plays on Thursday evenings. And they play from whenever they would be approved until early August. So, their field use is minimal and their requirements and guidelines are all passed down from the umbrella organization that oversees them. Every team in their league is required to follow their guidelines. And I believe the league administration, if I was to receive a complaint and I pushed the complaint through to their overhead organization, their teams would be kicked out of the league anyways, based on the guidelines I've been given.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Mike Hernandez?
Just a quick question, are the porta-potties available yet for them?
Yes, porta-potties have been put out on site.
And they're responsible for sanitizing them?
The Olsen sanitation is still going two times a week to sanitize porta-potties.
All right, but not every day after use then?
No, they're not able to go out every day.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to say that I thought the Little League write-up on the requirements to comply with COVID-19 was very well-done. James Bolstridge, I thought, did a very thorough job. And that was shared with the selectmen previous to this meeting. So, good job, and hopefully, the follow-through is smooth for everybody and with everyone on the teams and the coaches and folks stay healthy. Any other questions for Nate tonight?
I have a question, Susan.
Yes.
Lou's thinking. Nate, and maybe it's because I didn't get your mail. I'm having a little difficulty with my computer and the Internet Explorer. We're trying to see if we can use Chrome instead, and it's still not working. So, I've talked to Kevin Armstrong and we might have to call him again to see why I can't get some of the information. But maybe it was listed in what you wrote, but maybe not. And maybe I don't know this for a fact. I haven't heard exactly where the Little League is going to be playing. Are they playing at Tomaso Field or are they playing at the New Park?
The New Park fields will not be used as of yet. They will be playing at Tomaso Field, Bransfield Park, Valley View, and softball will be played at Nolan Field. The new fields are not ready or mature enough to actually have the rough wear and tear from either soccer or Little League played on those fields yet.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Ralph, just a note while we're on that path. Certainly, we're going to discuss the idea of going with that playgrounds are going to be opening. Just so we can get it upfront and say as much times we have to is that the playgrounds may open in town tomorrow, but the playground at the New Park will not be part of that because it's not, it's still in possession of the construction company until we work out and they complete the work. And hopefully, it's soon, and I'll talk about it a little later. But the playground at the New Park will not be included in what opens up tomorrow.
Thank you, Ralph.
Are there any other questions for Nate on his report? I do want to have an endorsement by you, the reentry committee, for the report that Nate had made and all of the different programs, parks, playgrounds, as well as the youth and adult sports leagues and so forth. Is there a motion for endorsement from you?
I'd like to make that.
Michael Pelton made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Jim Tripp. And the motion is to endorse the report by Portland Parks and Recreation for the reentry based on the COVID-19 guidelines from the state of Connecticut for all of the programs that he mentioned tonight. I will give to the recording secretary your memo to make sure that's included, Nate, so that others can read it as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of endorsing the Parks and Recreation reentry report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll say aye, only because I haven't read it.
Are you saying yes?
No, I'm saying.
Abstain?
Yeah.
You're abstaining, Lou.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Susan, I'd like to abstain too, because I have a conflict of interest in there, like with the Little League. So, can I abstain too?
Yes, you may. So, we have two abstentions, Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Pear, for reasons stated, one being a director of one of the programs and the other for not having had the ability to access the information tonight. The rest are voting in affirmative, so there will be one, two, three, four, five votes, and the motion passes. Thank you. The next report to the reentry committee is the public library. And I think that Janet Nocheck is also on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, let's see, start my video. Good thing I have my headphones on. Good evening. Oh, the governor announced that our libraries could open today, but it was, we really weren't given any guidance on what we needed to open until just a little over a week before that. So, none of the libraries in our area, virtually, I don't think any one in our area is open at this point for, you know, to have the doors open publicly. We are providing services. Most of us are doing curbside pickup. And that which means you can reserve an item, call, or go online and reserve it. And then we have the material, buy the book for the movie. And as soon as it's available, we will bring it out to you. We arrange a time and bring it out to the car. So, just so, doing a little advertising here too, because we want people to know this because there are many people that really miss having their books. We are also working on, you know, virtual programming. We do that. There are some adult programs, book talks, online and all. And we've got the whole summer reading program for children is almost all virtual. There's a couple of outdoor things for small groups with the teens, I believe. And we do have a drum circle that we're hoping to have it in August when we hope that, and indeed, the governor has loosened up a little bit. So, we think there wouldn't be too many people at that. We have it outdoors, weather permitting, that we're good. If not, we'd have to go have that virtual as well. We had a kickoff with a bubble guy. And what we did was our children's librarians were doing kind of curbside thing with the materials so the kids could participate in the program. So, it wasn't just watching a screen, that they actually could, you know, participate and interact. It was a Zoom thing. They were talking and all. So, that really went well. There was a number of families, it was, it might have been 12 families were there. So, it was a good showing, we thought, for that considering that, you know, kids have just been looking at these screens for so long and doing their homework on them and everything with them. So, we were hoping to get something that was a little bit different, and it was. That's the kind of things we've been doing now. As far as getting ready to open the doors, we, as I said, we were a little surprised. And I was at a meeting on Zoom with the state library, who's offering groups of librarians to talk together. And that was very valuable. And the thing they said was, it's a little surprising suddenly that we were opening without too much, you know, heads up. So, they actually were trying to go through all, they did go through all of the guidelines that the governor had put out. And many of them, we can meet. And we're, you know, we cannot, however, do everything for a little bit longer because we don't have plexiglass off. We just got a new desk, which is looking nice. Our, you know, we've got a desk ready to go, but we need to get plexiglass shields for that to protect staff and patrons from sort of getting too close there. I should have seen those in all the stores now. So, we do have that getting ordered now. And it should be coming in within a few weeks. So, but we're not sure exactly when. The other thing is we have furniture that was ordered as part of our improvement project. And that furniture was delayed when they were shut downs. And that will be in, the date that it is to be delivered is July 15. And there's quite a bit of stuff coming in, some lounge-type furniture. You know, we had some chairs and things that were in the reading area. had some chairs and things that were in the reading area and outside the building, and we've gotten some more things for a reading area with newspapers and magazines and such to be more in the back of the building, where some of the music was outside where my office is, you go in, it's back on the right. So that will be a lot of things being delivered, some display tables and that, and some nice adjustable tables for people to work at at different heights, which was one of the things we wanted for more accessibility. Those things will be being delivered one day, and all have to be put in place, so that we can make sure it all works the way that the architect planned and everything, so we probably have to be closed that day. So I'm thinking, in terms of looking at the materials, and also we need to do some more training on how we'll keep the place clean, how we'll handle all the situations that come up, and just, I don't think everyone knows it, but if you come into a library these days, people are using computers, and a lot of them need help now and then, and quite a bit of time is usually spent pretty close to people, and you're using the same keyboard or something like that, so we have to work out some different ways of helping people with that, and I don't think we've gotten exactly, we don't have exactly down yet, but you'd have to kind of practice with it a little bit, there might be a software solution too, that some libraries are looking at, to kind of take over the screen, see if that would work, I'm not sure if it would work with all of our patrons, but it would help. So there are a lot of questions, questions about children coming in, you know, whether we need some different hours. What I'm planning is to have some hours where elders would be invited, people my age and up, and, you know, that could come in and not kind of be totally interacting with the kids and everyone, you know, if they feel more comfortable that way. They wouldn't have to come in then, but that would be offering as they do at our local stores quite a bit at Adams, they do that, they have an hour different mornings, or, I think they have it every morning, but, excuse me, so that would be the kinds of things. So it will, there's sort of a lot of complicated scheduling to that, now that we know what we need to do, we can do this, that will take a few days or so of working out with the staff, how we'll do it. I think we'll be having some reduced hours to allow for all the things we'll have to do, we'll have to be kind of out on the floor more, you know, usually there's a couple of people up front working, and others are doing other things in back and covering the night, we're not covering those nights as much, as many hours nights on Saturdays, we'll be more reduced, you know, just during the day, we'll have more people around, but we'd have them spread out, and they would be able to do the different things that will be needed. So we'll have to work on that. So I'm looking at, maybe mid-July would probably be a time that I would recommend that we open, you know, after the 15th, which is a Wednesday, unfortunately, it makes it a little goofy, we might have to want to wait till the Monday after. It would be July 20th, and then we would start opening maybe Saturdays until 1:00. We have not been opening any weekends, you know, not providing services per se on the weekends, but that's the kinds of things that we're considering. And the project is pretty much completed at the library, we have nice lighting and carpeting desks and things, but just that delivery of all that furniture is hanging out there, so that's pretty much where we're at with that.
So Jan, I think some of the things you mentioned were not put in the report to the selectmen, a lot of it was. I don't know if you're looking for an endorsement of what you said tonight, or you wanted to follow up at a later time?
I guess I just, you know, wanted either an endorsement or a knowledge that we will need a little more time to get the particulars together and to make sure we've got our plexiglass and now up there.
Okay, I'll open it up for questions from the selectmen.
Susan, Mike Hernandez again?
Yes.
With everything that she was just telling us, we have a meeting on, what, the 15th of July? Maybe she could report back, and it'll be more confidence of what's going on there, and then we can endorse it then, that she can open up on the 20th if she's ready, if that works for her.
Jan, is that okay?
Sure, yeah, that's, that sounds good, I could probably have the plans together before then for you, and then when we make sure on the 15th that we have, you know, our furniture in, and that, that sounds like a good time.
Yeah, I believe it's the 15th of July, Mike?
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll have the report before that time, and we'll proceed to have that on the agenda. Thank you, Jan. Any other items from the selectmen or questions?
This is Ralph, yeah, I agree with Mike, you know, given the fact that we're waiting for that furniture, and we know how sometimes plans, when things are going to arrive, don't always arrive. So we'll see, but I think that's a good, you know, and we've talked about trying to be more consistent with openings of the towns around us as well, and since some of them are, all of them actually, pretty much are sitting on no making a date, I think waiting out a little longer certainly makes sense.
Thank you. Just a brief report on Town Hall and the Buck Foreman Building. Those buildings, while all the employees are working every day and have been throughout this period of time, we are not open to the public except by appointment. So if our folks need something, they call ahead to the specific office. If there's any questions, you can always contact my office at 342-6715. We'll be happy to make arrangements to make sure that you have whatever resources or product that you need. But at this point, Town Hall is not open to the public. We did install, I think I mentioned it last time, that we were going to, and it has been installed, a large after-hours box that is behind Town Hall, and it's adequate, it's checked several times during the day, so that if you're paying taxes or need to communicate in writing, you can leave that in that box, and you'll see it's right next to the garden in the back of Town Hall. The next item is under Old Business, letter B, which is racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, and you heard the report that we had earlier on training. I know that last time we met, we talked about making certain that we do follow a training program, and from the sounds of Joe and Ron's report, we should have some information and some actual trainings next month. And I will certainly be sure to follow that up and provide it to staff and to you as well, the Board of Selectmen. I'm committed to this, I think this is a very important step that we need to take, and it doesn't stop at one meeting, certainly at all, we will continue to have this on our agenda, and I open it up for any comments or direction that you may wish to provide.
This is Ralph. What I would say at this point is, yeah, I was very happy to hear how proactive CCM is being in terms of coming up with some training efforts, so that I think that will go a long way, and being able to reach out to the officials in town, that would be very helpful, and to Joe's point, if we can look at making some of these modules, modules available at, you know, even at the community level, getting out with the folks in town, that would be great. It's good to see there's also a good effort that's underway, we're trying to, I mean, I've listened to the discussions at the last two Board of Ed meetings, so there's an effort underway to try to look at some of the, the things that should be, you know, looked at or evaluated from a Board of Ed education standpoint, so that's really good as well. And we certainly, I know, Susan, you and I have had some brief conversations about the police force and how we can look at how we can do things with that. I guess what I would ask, you know, beyond the town officials, the police department, the Board of Education, what I'd probably ask is, is there something else out there that we should be thinking about, including? I don't know, I mean, obviously, we've talked about maybe stretching out the community with some sort of education or tying into it, but I don't know, is there something else that we're not bringing up that we should be including? I guess that's the question I would ask.
Well, I certainly think, Ralph, in terms of if the legislature does have a special session, we would want to have some input from our state representative and our state senator, as far as our representation in Hartford, and make that available to our community, so they could have input to any state actions that are going to be discussed and perhaps taken. We'll follow up on that. Want to thank Joe DeLong and Ron Thomas once again for coming, it's great to have both of them here and to provide us with such great input, so thank you, gentlemen, and we'll look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. The next item is letter C, appointments to boards and commissions, are there any appointments tonight? There are none, so we'll move on to New Business, letter A, amended citizen participation plan for COVID-19. You were sent this, again, I apologize, Lou, I don't think you received this.
It's kind of interesting, I got this one.
You did?
Yeah.
We'll talk tomorrow and figure out how to make sure we get you that information, and I'll work with Kevin to make sure your information is gotten to you, either by electronic or we'll deliver for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Last time I did talk about the opportunity for Portland to participate in writing a grant through the Community Development Block Grant, and in order to do that, we need to amend the Citizen Participation Plan. That is an opportunity for citizens to make comment as to whether we should participate in any given grant associated with CDVG, Community Development Block Grant, and as such, it includes much of what we need to do in terms of the COVID-19. So it's having electronic meetings, making certain that people have access to either the chat, or to written communications, or to Zoom communications with us. So with that, I would need an approval of the amended Citizen Participation Plan for COVID-19 from the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended Citizen Participation Plan for COVID-19 as presented.
Thank you, Jim, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Was that Rick, was that Lou?
Lou, yeah.
Lou Pear, thank you, Lou. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is the actual grant application, I just wanted to, again, bring to your attention that we are making this application. We're going to have a, need to have a public hearing on this matter, and I believe you were sent by Michelle a legal notice of a public hearing, and I would suggest that the public hearing be held, because there's, there's requirements that we have this in the newspaper electronically, and that we also have it posted for five days running electronically. We also will put it in the River East, and we'll also put it on our website, and the suggested date is actually a Monday, the 29th of June at 6:00 PM, and it would be by way of Zoom. It would give us opportunity to listen to the citizens' views on the town's needs, which could be part of this town's application for funding for COVID-19 funds. We anticipate applying for approximately $250,000 related to the prevention, preparation, and response to COVID-19 for elderly services under the COVID-19 program. Specifically, we're interested in getting feedback from our community in regard to expansion of transportation services. We have not been running the senior buses to take folks to activities, shopping, and they are not going to doctor's visits. They need to be retrofitted, and in fact, this grant anticipates the possibility of applying for a van that would be with the appropriate plexiglass and other ways of preventing spread of germs within the van. We also are looking at renovating the kitchen, I'm here at the senior center, and the kitchen needs extensive renovations if there is to be any meals prepared, delivered, and/or made available for people. So the stove would need to be replaced, a hood system, as well as some additional dishwashing that would be necessary, better dishwasher. So some, some of those things, we've been thinking about for a long time, but with COVID-19, the services for our seniors has been severely limited, and one of the areas that we really need to address is transportation, and the second would be the provision of meals for those people that are unable to either get out, or would be able to do some pickup, where someone could get meals for them. We also anticipate, as time goes on, that there will be a better response to the prevention of COVID-19 and/or the eradication of it, and as such, we appreciate having the ability for socialization for seniors, and food, and the ability to prepare it in this building is tantamount to having good socialization. So with that, if I could have a motion for the public hearing to be held, to be noticed and held on June 29th at 6:00 PM by way of Zoom, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make the motion, it's Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph, is there a second? That was Jim, and comments? All in favor of the public hearing being held on the 29th of June at 6:00 PM by way of Zoom, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And as we proceed from that public hearing, we'll give you the opportunity to comment and vote on the actual application. The next item is letter C, a resolution for the copier lease, I had brought this up at your meeting last time, and we did some additional research and realized we needed to set a special town meeting, which I had indicated to you last time, and that meeting would be held on, I believe, the 24th of June?
Susan, a question, is there, would it be acceptable to move that to the 25th of June? Wednesday, the 24th is actually an event that's going to be held for, with another organization in town that's going to impact a few people on this board.
It's certainly up to the selectmen, I don't anticipate a problem. I don't know whether the Zoom is available on the 25th, we could make it earlier in the evening, because I think that may be a planning and zoning meeting on Thursday. Do you know, Kevin? Zoning Board of Appeals is on the 25th at 7:00, so we could, Jim, have it at 6:00?
I believe the other, the other meeting that starts
No, what I'm saying is the 25th of June at 6:00, not 7:00.
Oh, that would be fine, yeah.
Thursday.
Yes, that'd be great.
Would that be okay with everyone?
Yes.
Thursday, the 25th of June at 6:00 PM, and that would be to approve, authorize, discuss entering into a lease purchase agreement and service contract for office copying equipment for the Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the public hearing for that date and time?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, that we approve the public meeting for the, for the authorization to enter in a lease of purchase equipment and service contract for office copy equipment, and for the public hearing to be on June 25th at 6:00 PM.
It's actually not a public hearing, it's a special town meeting.
Apologies, yep, it's a special town meeting, my apologies.
There is no vote, per the governor's executive orders, but it gives an opportunity for people to be noticed that this is occurring and make comment to us, and then we would adjourn before a vote to the Board of Selectmen for their, for their consideration of a vote, probably later that same evening. Motion's been made, was it seconded? I'm sorry.
I'll second it too.
All right, thanks, Mike. Do we have a recording secretary? Okay, so the motion's been made by Jim and seconded by Mike Pelton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Likewise, we spoke last time about New Business, number eight, letter D, resolution for the Eversource proposed LED lighting at the library, and that too, because it's a multi-year commitment of dollars, would need would need to have a special town meeting. And you had received information on that as well. I would suggest that that special town meeting, because our finance director asked that they be separate meetings because they are separate financial obligations. So, I would suggest also the 25th of June, Thursday, 25th of June, and this one to meet at 6:15 PM.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have the special town meeting for the Energy Efficiency Services Loan Agreement with Eversource for the 25th at 6:15.
Thank you. Is there a second?
It's Ralph. I'll second it.
Thank you, Ralph. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Thank you. Motion carries. We have no refunds of excess payments. So, we'll move into number nine, Status of Committee Reports. I think Ralph had a committee report for us, please.
Yes, I'd like to, you know, a couple of quick ones. The first one would be with respect to the park. The big thing I'll note about the park is that I think that some of us had resigned the idea that the park was not going to be opening this year in some formal sense because of the restrictions. So, we were kind of surprised when splash pads and playgrounds were allowed to open up, I guess, today. That being said, certainly, we obviously have some work to complete at the park. But we are going to have a meeting tomorrow to actually start discussing some sort of an opening to the park. I think we're anticipating the park should be completed in between now and the middle of July, I would guess. I have to verify with construction, with Nick Dorita. With regards to things that are still outstanding, and I've mentioned a couple of them, a couple of them I'll update. We're still waiting for some plumbing work to be done in the building. I know there's a meter, a town water meter that has to go in. And that was ordered. I don't know if it's in yet, but they had ordered the town meter to go into the building. So, we have that coming. There's some wall repairs that are going to have to be done as well by the contractor that did the building. We are waiting for, I know I mentioned at the last meeting about the company coming to do the programming of the splash pad controllers. What we didn't know at that time, well, I didn't know at that time, is that this company is coming from Canada. So, they are actually, right now, not allowed to come and do the work because until they open the border up at Canada, they can't come here. I think, though I haven't verified, but I believe on the 21st, the border may be opened. So, then we can get them down to do the programming of the splash pad. So, that was yet another impact to our situation because of the pandemic. Then we have the Strickland, as I've noted, Strickland work has been completed. And actually, they did some hydro seeding on the old Strickland Road this week. The only thing that would be done on Strickland is that we have to, there's two lights that were required, one at Route 17 at Strickland and one at the park entrance. And so, Dorita Construction has to put in the basis for those lights so that Eversource could install the lighting. So, they were working on that. They're planning to work on that this week. So, those really are the items, other than some signage and a couple of smaller things. Those are the bigger things that we have to get done. Hopefully, I'm going to try to get from Nick Dorita more of a formal idea of timing tomorrow because I'd like to bring that to the committee when we talk about an opening. But I'm kind of excited because maybe we indeed will get to use most of facilities. Again, as we noted, the fields would not be something for general use by Little League or a soccer club until the fall. But getting to the park and getting access to all of the neat equipment that's been installed would be a great thing. So, we'll be, I'll obviously have more updates, but that's what we're working on. The second thing I was just going to note is that I did go with Jan on a walk through the library yesterday to see the improvements and to talk about how they're going to deal with some of the issues with the pandemic. It was, I just want to point out, there was some really nice work that was done because I know it was town workers that did some painting within the building. And obviously, we have the new rugs and new lighting. And so, it looks really impressive. Once the furniture is there, it'll really be all done. But it's another one of those, let's, you know, hurry up and wait. So, that's where we're at. But it's really looking nice. So, hopefully, we'll get to share it with everyone soon.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other committee reports tonight?
Just a couple of quick notes. The Water, the Board of Selectmen, Water and Source Subcommittee did meet last week. It was a good meeting. We continue the discussion. I know that there was some discussion around trying to resolve, you know, we always talk about infrastructure. There's basically a work being done on a plan resolving an area that has been prone to a couple of water breaks. There's a plan being worked on to try to resolve those. I think in a really good development, the salt shed, that plan, that project is getting ready to proceed. That's a good shot. That's in very good shape. Some nice work done by Bob and the team on getting that moving. And we continue the discussion on pursuing alternate water sources, which we know is part of the long-term strategy on changing the cost model for our water system. So, that's about it on the committee reports, though, that I have.
I have a question for Jim. On the water, are you guys going to do some well testing or testing for wells at the Wongonk Field?
That is, Lou, one of the recommendations that has been made because of the aquifer that's proximate in that area that has been known to provide some clean water. We have wells that are in place on Strang Avenue today. They would have to get reactivated with deep, but that's a process we can go through. But they have an issue right now, or at least when they were activated previously, they were found to have iron manganese, which would require ongoing treatment of that water. If we're able to find a water source and potential is on a property at Wongonk Metals, you know, or elsewhere, depending on what the recommendations come in as, that is clean, that we don't have to do that ongoing treatment. There are operational savings that'll go on with that going forward. So, that's something that's under consideration. We're trying to take a look at that because there is a process you have to go through regarding bids and then making sure that we, you know, find the appropriate funding and things of that nature to proceed with that. So, it's something that, as we always are, we're trying to be very careful with how we're spending the money. So, we're really taking a look at those options.
I think it's very good on your part and the committee and the commission that are looking for better ways to service the people in our town with clean water.
Thank you, Lou. Yeah, the committee's working very hard on it. We're, it's top of mind whenever we meet. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Public comment? Kevin?
All right, we have. Scroll through here. Elizabeth Habino, 19, Scenic Drive. She states, "I want to say thank you to Susan and the Board for your commitment to meaningful training on anti-racism to move our town in the right direction."
Thank you, Liz.
Actually, this might be a question for Nate. This is also from Kitch. She asks, "Please explain the daily cleaning of the portlets for sports."
Is Nate still on the call?
He is. I'm going to just unmute you, Nate. You want to touch on that?
So, our sanitizing company, Olson, who provides the portlets, normally do a twice-a-week cleaning. I have not been informed of any other specific mandatory cleaning that is required for portlets at this time. Public bathrooms have been stated need to be cleaned on a regular recurring basis if they are open. But portlets, I have not heard any specific requirements for.
I want to point out that on Friday, June 19th, in front of the Brownstone Intermediate School, at 4:30 PM, the Greater Middletown and Portland Diversity Committee will be hosting a Juneteenth event. And you're all invited. I was asked, if time permits, to read the proclamation that you passed recently on Juneteenth. So, you're all invited to attend. And as I said, that's Friday, June 19th at 4:30 in front of the Brownstone Intermediate School. Yes?
Kitch would like to speak as well. I'm going to bring her in.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Susan. Thank you, Kevin. It's great to have Joe, excuse me, Joe and Ron with you tonight. Nate, this is through Susan to you. I'm under the impression that the portlets have to be cleaned on a regular basis and not just two or three times a week, especially if you're having multiple teams and the Little Leaguers using them. Any response?
Yeah, Nate?
Do you know where you saw that info, Kitch? Was it through CDC specifically?
So, not through CDC. Other towns that are having Little League actually are not letting the kids use the portlets because of the cleaning that is being advised. So, I don't know where it came from, but I do know that other towns are having Little League. The games are starting, but the kids cannot use the portlets because there's no way to keep them clean. And I just, I don't want us to be in a situation where we're not following or that, I mean, when you think of maybe 10 or more people using the portlet during any game time, that's a lot of hands on a handle. And hopefully, that's a lot of hands lifting the seat of the toilet. But, you know, it makes me worried. Now, granted, you could provide us hand sanitizer bottles at every game. I mean, that might be an option. And I guess it's incumbent upon the coaches to have the players remember to wash their hands or to sanitize their hands. But I just, you know, to hear that they're only going to be cleaned on their regular schedule of twice a week is a little scary to me.
I will find that specific information out and make sure there is a certain answer before I move forward with use of the portlets.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And Susan, I had another question. And that has to do with the trees in the area of 332 and 330, I'm sorry, 432 and 436 Main Street. Those trees are on the snow shelf or in the, you know, in the state of Connecticut right away. I'm concerned because there are two trees that appear to be dead. They have some leaves this spring, fewer leaves than last year. But they're dropping branches at a pretty regular rate. And I don't know if you would contact Eversource or the state of Connecticut. I think they need to be trimmed. Potentially, they may need to come down. But there's a fair amount of branches coming down, and they're not small branches.
I will identify those, 432 and 436 Main Street, Kitch?
Yeah.
Public Works will address. Typically, we either have an arborist come look at them and/or the arborist that works with Eversource. So, we'll get someone out there and take a look at the status and see what needs to be done. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you so much. There's so many people out walking.
Oh, I know. Yes. Now, we depend on you to let us know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
No, I do not have additional comments at this time.
Is there any informal discussion by the Board of Selectmen?
I just have one note, really kind of a PSA. In talking with Ruth Mayo on Monday night, she just asked me to convey and just let folks know that the Food Bank is currently performing a food distribution on Monday nights from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Waverly Center. It is for Portland residents. If anybody either needs assistance with food or knows someone who needs assistance with food and is not aware of the program that is going on, they can show up between 4:00 and 6:00. What they've been doing is prepackaging boxes depending on family size. Typically, it includes some fresh vegetables, fruits, as well as a half gallon of milk and an appropriately sized box to try to help assist with the family. So, if anyone's in need and knows someone who's in need, Monday nights, 4:00 to 6:00 at the Waverly Center, the Food Bank's doing that distribution.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Ralph. I just want to make a comment because Nate indicated that someone may have misunderstood something I said with regard to parks. So, based on what we talked about earlier, all the parks related to Nate's programs or Little League are going to open up because we've all agreed with his plan. What I said was, the thing that wouldn't be opening up for the time being is anything in the new park, especially, obviously, the playgrounds because everyone's going to hear playgrounds are open. The playground in the new park is not open yet. So, I just want to make sure there's no confusion out there because someone misunderstood what I took. So, that is what, if I misunderstood, that's how I understand what we just agreed to.
Okay. Anything else? Is everyone able to speak? I know that Rick had some trouble at the beginning of the meeting. I was just reading my, are you having trouble, Rick? Oh, he's muted. Why is?
He's not, but I can't hear him.
I was wondering why it was so quiet this meeting.
Does he have a separate mute that would be just for a microphone attached to his computer?
Possible.
Yeah, so in other words, he's not being muted by Zoom. He might be being muted locally on his PC.
It's also possible, Rick, within Zoom, in the bottom left-hand corner where your microphone is, the wrong one might be selected.
Yeah.
If you click on that little upward-facing arrow, if there's more than one microphone to choose from, you might be able to toggle and get the right one. No.
If you want to speak, Rick, you could call me on my cellphone.
Yep, that will work as well.
Okay. Let's see if he, there he is. Hello, Rick?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first off, I have a new computer, so that might be the reason for the lack of speakers. Kitch raised a good point on the porta potties. I was trying to bring that up earlier. I think they should be cleaned daily if they're going to be used.
Keep going. Keep trying.
Okay. Is that better? I think with the porta potties, like, they're going to get used every day. Just cleaning them twice a week, I don't know. That doesn't, that seems like not a good thing. They should be cleaned more regularly or right after the event or the next meeting, in my opinion. And maybe we should ask J Adam Health's opinion on that. But twice a week, I don't know. It seems like enough if they're getting a lot of use.
Agreed. We will get back to the selectmen on that and also to Kitch and let her know. I do believe that will need to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. It's been so quiet because every time I went to say something, you couldn't hear me. I'll keep listening.
All right.
Bye-bye.
What's even tougher, imagine, is these towns are saying that you're not going to use porta potties. So, you're going to have these 10-year-olds running around and waiting till the game is over. Interesting.
I will be looking into, I think it was Rick and Lou for the proposed land swap with the Exchange Cup. I will look into that again with our attorney to see if we can. I will look into that again with our attorney to see if we can push that along. So I'll be working with both of you on that as our committee on that topic.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. With that, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of negotiations regarding the contract between the Town of Portland and the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Jim Tripp. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Lou?
By Lou Pear. And it is 9:21. There is no anticipated result of this discussion. So we are going to go into a separate room of Zoom so that it's only the Board of Selectmen that will be there. And I will be conducting the meeting in executive session. And then when we come out, I will record the time and make sure it's conveyed to our recording secretary so she will know what time the meeting ends. Okay, so we'll take a brief recess while this room is cleared. Dave and Kevin need to instruct me as to how to make sure that I will close up the room. We'll take a brief recess. Is that okay, Selectmen?
Yep.
Motion to recess? Is there a motion to recess?
Make a motion recess.
Made by Jim, seconded by Lou. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.